This is going to be much easier. And I'll get some water.
They'll put it on the agenda.
Okay. Okay, I'll call the special committee of the whole meeting to order. We have quorum. Are there any declarations of pecuniary interest? Being none, then we will go forward with the item number one of the agenda. Members of council, I'll beg your indulgence, I'm going to try and do this on my iPad, just to get an early start, so we'll go from there. What I'd like to do is adopt the same approach that we did at our last meeting, and we'll invite the presentation, we'll wait till the end of the presentation, so we'll take notes and we'll ask our questions following the presentation. I'll start with Mr. Shelton, item number one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have prepared a presentation to go along with the report to provide details respecting the start of the 2015 budget insofar as council members are concerned. So if we can call up the presentation, please. So this today represents really the start of the 2015 budget process with the new council. Staff have generally been working on the budget, starting in September, as much as possible time has been dedicated to preparing the budget so that we can come forward with information at this point in time to start the discussion with the new council. So today, what we plan to do is to update council on the activities to date, including the administrative direction that was provided to staff to start the process, and to cover the overall schedule with you and to get approval for that. You're going to see through the proposed schedule that the first draft of the budget submission to council will take place on February 23rd, and we'll go through the steps between now and then to indicate how we intend to bring options and so forth forward to council. So to date the direction to staff in terms of starting the preparation of the base documents is to provide a maintain-type budget. So in other words, what we mean by that is to keep the service levels the same to a growing municipality. So there's a service level that applies to the existing streets and so on. As the municipality expands, that same level of service would be provided across the expanded town. In addition to that, we would be accommodating mandatory requirements and identify any growth items that by definition are growth, and we can get into those definitions with you, and also items that are considered enhancements. So that, the format of the budget will be set out by the treasurer, particularly for the new council members to see how the budget is built. So in terms of projects that are underway, as you saw during our discussions on what are the current initiatives that are underway, there are quite a number of them. So the budget will take into account those projects that are carried over into 2015 as well. And many of those are moving towards completion, such as Davis Drive and the Old Town Hall. And there are items that will help to inform the budget that will take place in 2015, such as the recreation master plans, so the playbook. So we are taking those into account as we move forward with the budget discussions with council. So Mike is going to touch on the whole process, but also from 2014, what worked well in that budget process, and also where there are areas for improvement, and to set out the drivers for 2015, the budget drivers. Wanda will be dealing with the proposed communication plan, including citizen engagement, and tying it somewhat into the new information that we have through the community survey. And then Ian McDougall is going to set out the proposed next steps, the timeframe associated with that, including, we'd like to add to the committee of the whole, which is currently scheduled for February 2nd, an item to deal with budget as well, and you'll hear what would be contained in that session. The timeframes will also take, allow us to take into account information that will start to flow out of the JCC, for example, with respect to Central York Fire. They have not had their meeting, so they'll have to start their budget discussions. The library board has started discussions, but as they mature, we'll be able to take those into account as well. So all of this will lead to a budget approval, which we're proposing for April the 20th, 2015. This occurs in an election year where the budget process starts now and finishes in around April. In a typical year, we start the budget process in around May, with the goal of seeing the budget approved by December, so that we generally go into a budget year with an approved budget. So I know staff really like this. 2015 represents a year where two budget processes take place with staff and with council. First one is to deal with 2015, to get it approved by April, and then probably immediately thereafter, beginning in May-June, we'll start the discussions with staff and council for the 2016 budget, so that we can see it approved in December of 2016. That will give us the opportunity to take into account more, in a more fulsome way, some of the strategic objectives that will come out of the discussions with council. So before I move too much into 2016, we'll start with 2015, and we'll ask Mike to give us a, an overview up to this point, and then it will be on to Wanda and on to Ian. Mike?
Thank you, Bob. Good afternoon, members of the committee of the whole. As we kick off the 2015 budget season, to further that sports analogy, we're going to take a look at last year's season for 2014 to 2014 process. So what worked well, what could, what will be improved, information we heard from the residents and some lessons. Some of the things that worked well, we tried some new items in 2014. I met individually with all the members of council. We had one-on-ones, and I think they were very productive. Got a lot of good information there. It gave each individual councillor an opportunity to ask any specific questions they wanted on the budget or on the budget process. And it's my belief that helped inform their decisions going forward from that. We also provided, for the first time, as Bob was alluding, typically in budget process, we start entering the information in the late spring, and we present the budget in September. What we did on the one-on-ones, which were, I believe, in the March-April timeframe, we provided budget drivers. So even though we didn't have the budgets at that time, we provided information on some of the things we knew would be impacting the budget, such as inflation, such as major initiatives, and things of that nature that were coming up. So that gave a general idea before we got into any of the specifics of where the budget would be going. We were also given a target, and actually for 2014, we were given two targets, and we hit those targets for the 2014 budget process. We also made a change in that we divided the budget up into the two components, what I call the maintain component. So this is to provide the same level of service to a growing municipality, and we also provided decision packages. These were discrete decision points that council would take a look at. They could be options to enhance service, they could be options for budget reductions. They may have detailed efficiencies, they may have detailed some of the growth items we put into the budget. But what has been a challenge in the past is when you look at a line-by-line budget, you say, okay, I want to adjust this line, but you don't know the impact on other lines. So the idea of the decision package, it had everything in there. That is one discrete item, if you make a change on that, all the costs, all the impacts are right there. Some things we will be improved. There was, there was some confusion on what I like to call version control. As we go through the budget process, the budget gets updated as we go along. We send out updates to the budget binders, which you'll be getting as part of the one-on-one sessions. We're going to look to very simple process of numbering those pages, you know, in detail, and please remove these pages, insert these pages. We're just going to be much more careful on the version control. Wanda's going to go into more detail on what we heard from the residents, but a lot of the information we've had from the various surveys indicate that there's a desire for the maintenance of existing service levels. They also would like more information on the budget process, the budget information, the key formats being on the website and in print. So that is some of the lessons we've learned from 2014. Going forward into 2015, we're going to try to build on the strengths of 2014. Make some sort of adjustments that we have to do because of the different timeframe, because of the election year. But also, we're going to look to, at some point, introduce, whether it be a multi-year budget, maybe be concept of outlooks, or something of that nature, to start changing to a multi-year focus, whether it be just on the capital or operating. We'll see how that unfolds. We have for this year a budget coordinating committee, which is looking at the budget process and improvements along this line that we can do. So we'll start off with the internal part of the budget schedule. A lot of these activities, as you can see, have already been done. Currently, we're in the process, the finance department is reviewing the budget submissions. We received them as of November 14th from the various departments, that being the operating and capital budgets, and any items they're recommending to sustain service levels within growth and any enhancements they might have. January and February, we'll be targeting the refinement of the budget. So that'll be looking to, SOT and OLT will be taking the original submissions and honing that down. This is where we're at on December 8th, sorry, on December 15th. We had the meeting on December 8th, where you saw the fees and charges. December 15th, this evening, would be the council approval of some of those fees and charges. We're having our introduction of the budget process at this time. I will be setting up appointments with you, council's indulgence, in January and February, the one-on-one sessions, to have them completed before we do the presentation of the preliminary draft budget. And the community engagement would be occurring during January and February as well. So February 23rd is the key date, that is the date that we will presenting the preliminary draft budget. To relate this to a non-election year, we're at the point now, we would be typically in May-June, where we're just talking about the process and the budget drivers. The February meeting is typically what we have in September, where we show the preliminary draft budget. October and November, in this case, March, would be the months that we work on the budget with the public, with council, with Target having it approved in April, which typically would have been December. Bob also alluded to the fact that we're going to use the February 2nd committee of the whole date to, as part of the budget process, and we'll be speaking to that later as well. There's a date there, you'll see. March 16th is the March break, and I believe the clerk is bringing forward a recommendation to change that to March 23rd.
That's in, that's in the council agenda tonight. Go ahead, Mike.
Administrative guidelines, this is the direction that staff has given in preparing the budget. And I want to emphasize that these were set back in September. So as Bob said, the objective is, first of all, to present a budget, recommend a budget, maintains the same level of service for a growing municipality. The inflationary pressures, we projected what the CPI rate would be for 2015, and at that time, we used the number 2.5%. We know that as of the end of October, it was 3%. I have no idea if that's going to go up or down, but the budget was predicated upon 2.5% and utilities at 5%. There are no unfunded deferrals carried over from 2014, and just give an explanation of that. So there's nothing lingering from 2014 asking to impact our 2015 budget. For instance, we had a reassessment on our Omech insurance. Substantial payments will be made in 2015 and going forward. Those will have been accrued at the end of December 31st, at the end of this month, the end of this year, so they will have no impact going forward. So anything that is related to 2014 or prior is going to be clean. Central York Fire Services, the numbers we're going to show you are based on the proposed implementation of the fire master plan. That has not been finalized yet, it still has to go to the joint council committee, the JCC. There's been no recommendation from them at this time, so we've just gone forward to what would be a feasible implementation of that. Fees and charges, as you saw last week, the target increase was 3%. That is based upon the projection of the CPI, the utility increases, and other factors to try to maintain the proportion of the budget that it has over time. The first step in the budget process staff did was to develop a maintain budget. So what is necessary to provide the same service levels as in 2014? We know that can't be done with the same dollars, because as we saw under the drivers, we have the inflationary pressures, the expenses are going up. There are also changes due to growth, the municipality is growing, services soften if you don't invest more money into maintaining those service levels. Again, growth, just to give a definition, the definition of growth we have here is based upon population to provide the same service level. And the service level can be a bit of an ambiguous term, but there's many different ways of measuring it. But in theory, it is on a per capita basis. So to maintain that service level for a growing population, more investment is required. New mandatory requirements have been factored into this budget. At this time, we've defined the Emerald Ash Bore as a mandatory requirement. That's, whether it is or not, that has been shown in the budget at this time. Any service level changes approved by council in 2014. I believe the Old Town Hall was one that has been factored into this budget as well. Removal of any one-timers, so if we had a one-time item that impacted the budget in 2014, is not carried forward in 2015. We had some growth items, which were of that nature, they don't get automatically carried forward. And amortize, sorry, annualization of changes in 2014. So if we had something, a change in expense, where we didn't put a provision in for the full year, as it happened halfway through the year, that has been annualized in 2015. An example of that would be our insurance premiums, where we've recognized half the increase in 2014, and the other half will be hitting us in 2015. So after developing the maintain budget, we get to the next step, which is decision packages. And again, these are the points where council could make some decisions on. We have them in two natures. We have the decisions that have been made, so if there's any new rates or charges that have been included... have been included in the budget, we'll show them as discrete decision packages. Any efficiencies will be highlighted as well. Any requests for enhancements, whether included in the budget or not, will be shown as well. Any deferred items will be shown. So you have a complete package on that. Again, to clarify the distinction between an enhancement and a growth item, a growth item, as I said, is increased investment due to a change in the per capita, an increase in the population. Enhancement is actually changing that ratio, so you're providing a higher service level per capita. So the decision packages will show how we're going to meet growth demands, so if there's any additional investment to meet growth. As well, during the process, and this is where we're targeting for February 2nd, we're going to bring back some reduction options as well. If there's any impact on service levels as a result, they'll be identified. Some of those reduction options also may include as well new fees and charges or efficiencies. So our task of staff is to prevent you, sorry, not prevent you, to present you with the information in a format that is usable to you, that you can make informed decisions. So I'm now going to show you some of the examples of the format of how we present the information. So this is one of the slides we used, and it's also the basis for the budget tool, how our tax hour is invested. So what it does is by service bundle, it shows what the monthly cost to an average resident is. So a couple of key factors here is, one is based upon the service bundle. So this is what is delivered to the public. It's not, as we saw before in the drivers, what the inputs into the budget are, but what are you getting? So you're getting waste collection, you're getting bylaws and licensing. What does it cost on a monthly basis? We go with the monthly basis, so that it can be viewed as that there's value for money, and it can be compared to any of the monthly bills that anyone gets. We base it upon the average resident, trying to make it meaningful. And I think that's it. Oh, and as we go through the process, we'll fill in the 2015 numbers as we get them and update them as well, as we get revisions. These are the drivers that we've identified, either from known or projected occurrences that will be part of the 2015 budget. I'll go through them in a little bit of detail. Again, similar to the other slide, this will be updated as we go through the process. It's targeting some reduction options, which have not been defined at this time. They will come forward on the February 2nd committee hold meeting. We'll give some options on that. I just wanted to show you a couple of things at the bottom. At this time, we have not included anything for an infrastructure levy, as you may recall, in 2013, 2014, based on the capital financing sustainability strategy and the Hempson's recommendations. We made an additional tax levy for infrastructure. Hempson's recommendation is that be somewhere in the 0.85% to 1.8% range. That has not been included at this time. For your information, a 1% tax increase is equivalent to $505,000. Just quickly going through at a high level, just explain some of the drivers we're looking here. So allowance for wages and benefits is our estimate of what, for the changes in benefits that we're looking at, the pressures on wages, what we're expecting would be a sufficient provision for that. Then the other materials utilities and the contracted services. We have the reopening of the Old Town Hall. The operating costs of that will hit us in 2015. Insurance premiums, this is the annualization of the increase in 2014. We have Emerald Ash Bore. We have shown this previously as a driver for a small amount, $100,000, and funded from reserves. There was a report that went to committee that explained that this will be eight to 10-year program for about $2 million, so we put in an amount for that. You saw the fees and charges last week at 3%. They would bring in $240,000. We put in a provision for growth-related costs, an estimate at this time of what will need to be invested to maintain our service levels with growth. Also assessment growth, as the town is growing, it's not just costs, but there's also additional revenues that come in as well, as there's new construction. Tax adjustments, I'll just spend a minute on that. What we're finding is through, we're getting a lot of challenges on our assessments, the assessment values of properties. This is going to the ARB, which is the Administrative Review Board, and we're finding some very, we're finding in 2014, we're being hit with some large adjustments, where we're having to redo assessed values of properties. And it is our information that that is going to continue for at least two more years in 2015 and 2016. So that will have a budget impact in 2015. We're expecting the same level in 2016, so no budget impact there, and perhaps being normalized back in 2017. Enhancements for the town, we've had, again, we have had no specific direction from council at this time, but some of the requests we're anticipating, and some of the things we're working on. We've included a provision that that could be up as high as $350,000. Century York Fire Services, this is New Market's share of Century York Fire Services, including a component for their share of the update on the master plan and an enhancement as well. And the library, what we're rejecting for an increase from them. That number at this time does not include any enhancements. So that would lead us to what could be a subtotal at that point. We're going to come forward on February 2nd with some options of how to reduce that through the decision packages to bring it down to the 2% to 4% range. This next slide is an example of how this would look on a budget summary. This is the tax-supported budget summary. This shows the steps. This is similar to how the region displays this budget. Again, these numbers would be updated as we go through the process, and they're based upon the drivers you've seen. Again, this is just to give you an example of how we present the information. The base budget being just to maintain the expenses with inflation from last year, mandatory items, that was the Emerald Ash Bore. Growth revenues, that's assessment growth. And then we have the growth expenses, which brings us to a subtotal to maintain our existing service levels. We then have a provision for enhancement items, the reduction options that we spoke of, a range that we'll present more information on, which would then lead us to the 2% to And this is what it would look like on an all-in basis. Again, this is something we'll provide during the budget process, where we try to see, as we know, it's not just the town taxes that affect the residents of New Market, it is also the school board and region taxes. So we start off with what we're projecting, a 2% to 4% tax increase for the town portion. We don't have any solid numbers for the region yet, or for the school board. We'll be updating them as we get them. The other thing is, we have to take into consideration tax shifting, that the burden of the taxes tend to, on the regional school board taxes, tend to shift more to the faster assessment growth in the southern part of the region. So this 1% is an estimate based upon the region coming out of a 2% tax increase. This is what the impact would be on an average home, which in 2014 had an assessed value In addition to the tax-supported operating budget, we'll be presenting information on some other budgets. The water and wastewater budget, you were given the fees and charges for them last week. We'll be providing the details on that, discussing the drivers behind that. As always, we'll be reconciling the budget to the six-year financial plan, which approved in 2012. The 2015 budget will then form the basis for an update on the 2000, or sorry, on the six-year water and wastewater financial plans. We'll be providing also the capital budget, will list all the recommended or the requested projects. We will be sticking within the funding envelope, so this will be the asset replacement fund, reserves, and any operating funding. It will take into consideration as well the findings from the capital financing sustainability strategy, as well as the asset management plan. We'll also provide a list of all the deferred projects. Later in the year, we'll also be presenting our reserve fund budget. That is based upon the information from the other two, other three budgets, is derived from them, as well as the capital carryovers from 2014. When we present that, we also will be presenting what the budget will look like on the financial statements. That's all I got.
Thanks, Mike. Mr. Mayor and members of council, I'll now outline the proposed public engagement communications plan for 2015 budget. As you have heard from Bob, this is an atypical year, where we'll be doing two budgets in one year. We will also be running a more robust campaign in the spring, for when council has set their objectives and strategic priorities for 2016 budget and beyond. As always, our goal is to increase public awareness and engagement in the budget process. Last year, we engaged thousands through multiple channels, including a mail-out to all households with their tax bill, a call-out to 15,000 residents, and a presence at facilities and events, including the farmer's market and on the GO Station platform, which was a great learning opportunity. People really like to be talked to when they're trying to get on a train, but, so we'll make some adjustments at any rate. The communications was geared to asking residents how they wanted their tax dollars invested, and asking residents to fill out the online budget survey, which we will also demo later in this presentation. As you saw in the report, we also had 370 residents, over 370 residents, fill out the survey, which was up from about 300 in the previous year. Just a quick walk down memory lane, based on the budget survey results from the past few years, residents that responded when averaged out resulted in only slight modifications in every category. This is in line with what we've heard recently from the community survey and past budget surveys, that residents wish to maintain service levels in almost every service area. We just recently learned, as you know, 84% feel that they get good value for taxes paid, and 95% of our residents are satisfied with living in New Market. And this was taken from the most recent community survey results that you heard, I guess it was last Monday. This chart just shows a different way to look at previous results that were obtained from the tool. It shows that in the green, you can see that 10% to 30% of those surveyed chose to increase the budget based on the bundle service areas. The blue, 10% to 20% chose to decrease the budget in various service levels. And the red shows the majority of residents who chose to maintain the budget. Again, hot off the most recent community survey from the fall, what we know right now is that citizens feel that they need more information on how their tax dollars are spent, and that came through loud and clear with these survey results. Information on our website and printed materials were cited as the community survey, in this community survey, as a preferred method to receive budget information. We will continue to increase the level of information through these preferred channels. And just important to note, you can't really see too well on the screen there, but to physically attend a meeting was the least preferred method, and we know that from attendance that we've received at previous open houses, that people do prefer to get their information through various formats. So some of the tactics that we will use again in Q1 2015 to gain residents' feedback and to gauge our community would be the mailer in the tax bill. And in this folder in front of you, we've put together some of the materials we delivered last year, just to give you, again, a walk down memory lane and some of the pieces that were delivered. So that mailer will be inserted into the tax bill in mid-January, and that will have the budget information directing people to use the enhanced online budget tool. And of course, we add an incentive there to complete the tool. We call out to 15,000 residents to ask them to get engaged and to fill out the budget survey. We have a presence at facilities and events, including events such as Winter Fest, where again, we'll have the budget tool on our iPads and also paper copies for people to fill out. We issue multiple releases at various points of the budget, utilizing the fifth estate to help us get our message out, advisories as well. We place ads in the newspaper that talk to your budget process. We have a full tweet schedule linking back to the survey and to our schedule as well and other budget information on our website. We run town page ads in the era and also in Snap, and that focuses on Budget 101 information. As you recall, you may recall, that we had, it was called My Two Cents, and now we call it Budget 101, and that talked to pieces such as we had our, it isn't just for dogs anymore, and that talked to some information regarding the asset replacement fund. So the interactive budget tool, with your indulgence, we'll just take a few minutes to briefly go over the budget tool, as not all may be entirely familiar. We've used this for the past, this will be our third year using the budget tool, which has been taken up by other municipalities in our region, also across Canada. So now, if we can turn it over to Cindy Whackett to help give me a brief overview of the tool.
Thank you, Wanda. Mr. Mayor and members of council, we welcome you to the conference.
Wanda, do you want to push your button? Good.
Is that good?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The online budget survey tool was developed to further engage residents in the budget process, and it serves three purposes: to educate residents, to provide council with insight, and to maximize or enhance resident participation. But how does it work? I'll take you on a little tour of the site and demonstrate how residents can use the tool, which takes about five minutes to do. So at the beginning of the survey, you'll note here, where I'm kind of circling around, there's an introduction from council to the residents to say why they would like the residents to engage and take the survey. It also provides instructions for using the tool. And what I'll do is I'll take you right there, just so we can speed up a little bit in the time. So basically, what we have is, online, we've broken the services down into eight different categories or service areas. So you'll see here, the first service area that's shown is the bylaw and licensing services. And we have, on the left, on the right-hand side here, your choice. And the resident has a choice to move the slider to the right to increase the monthly amount that is spent on a service, or to decrease it, you move it to the left. Before that, though, I'd just like to remember, or to mention, that they can enter their own property value assessment to personalize the tool as well. Otherwise, it goes back to a pre-assessed average that's shown up there. And these are using 2013 numbers, so we haven't updated it yet to 2014 numbers. So as they go through, they're going to comment on bylaw and licensing services, and at the end of each section, they can insert a comment to say whether they, or the reason why they might have increased or decreased the amount that they spent, would like to spend per month on each of the services, or just that they're really happy with the services that they receive from the town of New Market. So the second category is community events and programs, and the same thing, they can move the slider to the right or to the left to increase or decrease the level. Now, if they wanted to maintain the same level of service, they would just leave it at that center point in the middle. Oops. Whoop. There we go. And then the next category is facilities, parks, and trails, and all of these reflect our service areas that we report through on the budget. Century York Fire Services, Planning and Development Services, and each has the same categories. And you'll notice as you go through each of the service areas, there's a little bit of a description that's there, and provide some stats on the services provided within that service area. So once going through the entire exercise, we get to the end. And you'll note there's a black bar here that says that you have either decreased or increased your tax dollars. In this case, I think I might have moved the tool to the left a little bit too much, but if I move this one over, now you'll see it says you have increased your tax dollars by $0.46 per month, or 0.35%. And then there's a little tagline there that says, "This could result in a service level Then we ask the resident to include their email address and their name, so we can get back to them, because we always like to provide incentives to the residents when we can. And typically, it's a $100 gift card for completing the survey, but they're, not everyone gets a $100 gift card, let me clarify that. Their name is entered into a draw, a random draw, and then their name is pulled out, and one resident will receive a $100 gift card from that random draw. The only thing that we really ask the resident to complete for sure is their postal code, because this will allow us to ensure that each of the people taking the survey is an actual resident of New Market, so that we don't have anyone swaying any of the results that we receive. So this area down here is the only one that they really have to do. But we encourage all residents to ensure that they put their name and contact information in, so that they can... residents to ensure that they put their name and contact information in so that they can be entered into the draw. We also ask for information on their age, if they want to, and at the end, submit. When they submit their, click on the submit button, a thank you screen will pop up suggesting that the survey is complete and that they can share this link with any of their friends, families, or whatever in the town of Newmarket as well. Now, I'd like to put it back to Wanda to complete the public engagement component.
Thank you so much, Cindy. Appreciate that. So continuing on with some of the main pieces, we do have, as I've mentioned, the budget mailer that goes out mid-January, and that kind of kickstarts our budget engagement process. This piece is received, people can go fill out the survey, then in a few days, they'll receive the phone call, follow-up. People typically need to see something three times before they act on it, and then the follow-up with that is some advertising as well. So this piece from last year, you can see how it contains information. It breaks down the school region and tack, town portion of the taxes and each service bundle, and it also includes other ways to get engaged with the budget process. Our next steps, phase one of the campaign will run from January to February, as Mike mentioned. We'll be focusing on the budget tool. We will come back to council with preliminary results to help inform the next stage of the budget process, and that will help shape going forward with the decision packages. We will continue to research other engagement opportunities. We've looked at UserVoice, which is kind of a crowdsourcing tool, and also virtual town halls, which a few municipalities have dabbled into with their budget processes. And of course, we're always looking for ways to improve and welcome ideas from public council, and what we also do is prepare council a package so that they can extend engagement opportunities to their constituents and send people back to the tool, offer the opportunity to come out to some of our events and take part in helping residents to fill out that survey. So you'll see another package coming to you to help you engage your residents. And with that, that is the end of my portion of the presentation, and I will now send it to Ian to talk to you a little bit about next steps.
Thanks, Wanda. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council. So just to close off the formal part of the presentation, just to recap on a high level, the budget coordinating team will strive from this point forward to, to further advance the staff overall objective of providing for council's consideration for February, options that will bring down the, the town tax impact to between the 2% and 4%. And specifically to help in that regard, we would be looking to have a scheduled committee of the whole, it's already scheduled for February 2nd, to include a portion dedicated to budget so that we can actually spend some time discussing those options with council. So on the next slide, we've, we've got it kind of illustrated in a road, a budget road, if you will, as we go down the path, and specifically on some, some internal next steps, SLT and OLT, so the administrative team, will continue to review, refine, and prioritize the budget. And along with that, we will have the fire service as well as the, the library engaged in that process as well. And that administrative review will include things such as looking at growth and enhancement options, as well as other efficiencies and reductions, specifically leading to the development and internal review of the decision-making package for, that will ultimately go to council, but that will specifically look at the details around reduction items and options. And then as well, of course, given the results of the community survey, it's important that we spend some time to look at identified linkage with the budget as well as, as we go forward. So, so that will be done after today, and then, and then resulting in February 2nd committee of the whole, where we will be coming back with a very preliminary presentation around some of the public consultation results, as well as a very detailed decision-making package and option for council's consideration, review, and discussion around growth enhancement and reduction items and options to get us to what we identified as the impact. And then finally, we'd be looking at, as, as in the schedule, February 23rd is, is the draft budget being presented to council for their, for their review. So with that, I'll, I'll turn it back over to Bob.
Mr. Sheldon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we've gone through the presentation so that you could see the complete picture. If you have questions or comments, we can go back to the specific slide. And at the end of the day, what we're looking for is just an indication from council that we are moving in the right direction in terms of the schedule, the engagement, community consultation component, and the approach that we're proposing in putting together options for council's consideration. And part of that process would include any ideas coming from council members. We could sort of identify a time period for that as well, if council members are looking for us to take a look at a particular issue or area or idea, we could identify that for council members as well. So with that, I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I see Counselor Wiggs in the queue.
Thank you very much, and thank you very much for the staff for, for putting this together. This is a very good introduction on a very high level, very, very high, high level. I just want to bring staff and council's attention to a few things. When I look at, and I'm not sure what pages I'm, because these pages aren't numbered, but the budget survey, the respondents' budget priorities, this, this one here with the bar. Well, I don't see. Oh, it's just that one page, excuse me. So it's not page 19, I guess. I, I see that fully a third of our respondents, it looks like about 34, 35% of our respondents are looking for the talent to increase our investment in facilities, parks, and, and trails, and that's a fairly significant number. And I'll call that enhancement. But then when we, when you brought in a, a number, and I know it was just a number, very preliminary on enhancements, I believe the number you brought in was 350,000? So I'm, I'm just going to suggest that, that number may be a bit low to, to start, to, to start with, because there does seem to be a great demand in that area for enhancements. And at the same time, I, I do realize that we're looking for finalization of our recreation playbook and, and that, but I'm hoping that there are some things that we can start moving ahead on, that when we are looking at facilities, parks, and trails, that we're not going to be putting them off until the, we have all the information from the work we're doing on our recreation playbook. So, so these are comments here, because that's one thing that really jumped out at me. And that's frankly, that's also something that jumped out during the campaign period, talking to people on the doors and, and, you know, me asking them, you know, what they'd like to see more of, what they really like that we have, and it really does come down to our, our parks, our trails. And of course, you've heard about additional facilities enhancements, in particular, water parks seem to be, or splash pads seem to be very, very popular and great demand and certainly seem at relatively low cost and, and low maintenance. So I just want to bring, bring that forward to put that on your radar if it's not already there.
Thank you. Regional Counselor?
Thanks very much. The one thing I would say is that, to start with, just leaving off that point, the, the enhancements at 0.69 is, I think, a fairly robust number, but I would only suggest, though, that, and I'm not suggesting that you're, but the splash pad, building a splash pad, of course, capital dollars, this is operating, and so an operative splash pad might only be $50,000 a year, operational impact, so. So there, I, I don't think this means that some of those things couldn't be contemplated, it'll be more dependent on the capital budget implications. I guess if, if we could go to page 12 or slide 12, I have a few questions there. Can we get some information now or later on how, what, what's the formula, or what's the, the rationale or formula used to, to come up with a growth-related cost number of 1.78 or $900,000? And I, I know enough to know from our staff that there's a process behind that, but I don't have a clue what that process is.
Mr. Sheldon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, we can set that out for you. What, the definition of growth and the exercise that the commissions go through, what has not happened here is there is still the SLT review of all of the growth submissions, all of the enhancement submissions, to be sure that they have been categorized correctly. But generally, what growth is, is, if you can picture, if it worked this way, the town's area of development expanding, so growth would be to take that same level of service that is applied to, say, that area and apply it to a larger area, so that's growth. That is our, that's the definition.
Yeah, I got the definition part.
Yeah, and count, and each staff member tries to fit into that definition what growth is, and sometimes the growth happens in increments, or you might need like, you know, three-quarters of a person or whatever, not the full person, so we need to look at that in terms of how it, how it all fits together. So they will emanate out of, out of the three different areas, the town, fire, and the library in terms of growth, and we can set that out for you.
So what I'm hearing partially, though, in answer to, to it, is it's, it's not necessarily a, a growth based on per capita formula that leads to a number, and then staff have to, to deal within that. It's more staff will, so on a year-by-year basis, even though one would think if you've got a steady growth of 2% per year, for example, that you might have a steady number, but you might not, because there could be peaks and valleys within that. So it's more based upon each area reporting out and saying, here is the growth-related enhancement, the growth-related additions we will need this year to support service levels for the new population.
That, that is correct, and for the most part, probably most cases, we will put off that growth item, no, we're going to go another year, dealing with the same, whatever it is, staff equipment, and then we wait until, you know, we can accommodate it. So usually, it, it lags, that the growth items are coming in slightly later than they should, but there is still the refinement exercise that was alluded to, where through SLT and OLT, we need to look at all of these things, how they all fit together, and refine them and prioritize them.
When we get that information, can I also have the, the growth-related costs for each of the last year of the last term? So that equivalent number for the last four years?
Yes.
Thanks. The other questions I had on the same page, the, the Central York Fire Service is the master plan is 1.6, the 1.65 or $830,000. I don't know, and I, I'm not on JCC, but perhaps we've seen information related to this before, but can we get some sort of information report that, that specifically points to, if approved, what items within the master plan are driving tax increases, frankly, in the, in the immediate year, the plan's not even completed, in the first year of, of $830,000? But, and, and, and is there, I would assume there's probably already worked, I don't want to create new work, but there's probably work done on projected year-over-year cost drivers of the master plan if, if approved? And I guess, and lastly, I mean, if, if what I'm asking makes any sense, or would it make sense for that, for that, if it's not an information report, but even a, an agenda item on council, so that all of council as well as JCC can understand the implications of the master fire plan in advance of it being approved for multi-year budgeting?
Mr. Sheldon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On that, this number comes out of the, we'll call it the draft Fire Master Plan. The Fire Master Plan scheduled, because we were entering into an, an election period, the PIC associated with that takes place in early January, so we've kept the number in from that draft, but I think it's fair to say that the time period for implementing what's recommended in the Fire Master Plan, if approved, has been shifted. We've not shifted this number at all. So what, what I would really like to do is to go through the PIC, there will be a report to JCC, and that should set all of this out. In fact, from the Fire Master Plan, what JCC has asked for, and that I've committed that we will do, is to provide a set of staff recommendations and options associated with it, because there are different ways to phase in what is proposed in the Fire Master Plan.
Okay, that's helpful. I guess what I'm, what I'm getting at partially too, though, is that, and, and the process you have to go through with JCC is obviously the process you have to go through, but I, I guess I'm feeling kind of like, as a member of council, if, and, and first I'm hearing you is that, that right off the top, that this, even if this was the full plan was approved, that this would probably be able to be, what's the right term we use? It's partial year?
Phased.
Not just, yeah, but annualized. Annualized, thank you. So there might be some, some wiggle room there, and I'm sure that's probably partially in that reduction options line. But the other thing I guess I'm wondering is, is, along with the budget process, if not part of the budget process, could we, could we not, I, I just feel like I need to understand the mass, I, I guess it sounds to me like there's a road we're going down. If you go down that, and it's taken to the JCC, and there's a PIC related to it, et cetera, it might be a little late for this council to weigh in, or this council to provide some input to JCC regarding the impact. I mean, if we're talking about a, a master fire plan that could have a, a 2% per year impact for five or 10 years out, I think we need to have a pretty darn serious discussion about that. And I think that discussion needs to involve council, I mean, as an inputting body to JCC, and, and then it comes, of course, comes back to us, but I, I don't want to wait to the very end for council to go, whoa, this is a, this could be a big problem. So is there some way you think we could either, I'm open to a workshop, I think it's significant enough that there's a workshop potential here, or there's a part of the budget process, but I, I'd be curious to know what others, but that's a concern of mine.
Mr. Sheldon?
Mr. Mayor, we can accommodate that. First off, we can put together a package of what has taken place towards the, well, more or less in 2014 in that regard, the reports that have gone to JCC. We do have Central York as part of the orientation session, that would be another opportunity to expand that, to deal with what does the Fire Master Plan say, and have that discussion with council. That would be a workshop format. Council could then decide if they wanted to move any of that into a committee of the whole. But we can certainly start out with some base information, and then make sure that we have a parallel process of JCC being updated and council as well as the employer.
Yeah, and it's, yeah, no way, I'm, I'm in no way suggesting or trying to reserve JCC's role, but I think a master plan is so significant, and it's, it's implication for budgeting and multi-year budgeting is so significant that I think we, we need to take a, a parallel look at that.
Could we include that in the decision package, Mr. Sheldon, as all part of the...
We could, Mr. Mayor, just, we have to, I just need to, I guess, take into account the governance structure that is associated with that. So maybe that that decision package goes to JCC as well. At the end of the day, the employer makes the decision, so we just have to make sure that we respect the protocol going through. The PIC, I just want to confirm, has been set, and, but the position taken is that no decisions have been made on that Fire Master Plan. It's, it's a recommendation that's coming forward from a consultant, but it will then be taken by staff and a presentation and recommendations and options set out.
Okay. Last question, sorry, on this, on this page, or, it was for now, is the, the tax adjustments. I believe I heard Mr. Mays suggest that that was going to have an impact on 2015 and 2016, and maybe about 2015, 16, and that it would normalize thereafter. Did you mean that the 0.59 would cover 2015 and 16, or that it would require another 0.59 in theory in 2016?
Mr. Mays?
To you, Mr. Mayor, that there the, the 0.59 increase in 2015, which would bring the funding up to that level, there would be no change necessary, we would maintain that level in 2016, and we're anticipating 2017, we return to, to a lower level. What has happened is the ARB has put in a deadline, or putting pressure on getting a lot of the old cases caught up, and we're being hit with a lot of those events at, at this time. They, they're targeted by the end of 2016, have been through the backlog, so that's why we're anticipating that it'll go, whether we can lower it by the full 300,000 in 2017 or half 200,000, we're not quite sure at this point, but it wouldn't be maintained at that level. So to answer your question, no, an increase in 2015, no additional increase in 2016, is we would just stay at the same level.
Okay, so I guess my question would be, and I'm sure it was discussed at least, maybe not lengthy, but, but my, I guess I can't help but think, well, first of all, you get to the end of 2016, and then we're, we're going to go to the end of a budget process, and we're going to land in a number, and then we're going to say, but we can minus 0.59 off of that now, because this has ended. I'm doing this a little tongue-in-cheek, but I doubt that's going to happen. So once you've got something built into a budget, dollars in, it rarely comes back out in that manner. Maybe it would create room for something else, or, but typically, I, anyway, I think you know what I mean. So I guess I'm, I'm asking the question, I'm sure it was discussed, but was there consideration given, since it's only for two years potentially, or it looks like it's only for two years? Certainly typically, things like this are one year, sometimes we look at taking from a rate stabilization in a reserve or another type of reserve, instead of raising taxes by 0.6%, or 0.6%, which is not, not a small amount, and then bringing it back potentially, I'd say that, in quotations, bringing it back down in two years, so I guess, was that looked at?
Mr. Sheldon?
That will be looked at. The general philosophy is that if there are what we call one-timers, I think Mike referred to that, and this is maybe a one-timer that's for two years, I think subject to some further discussion, that is something that you can take a look at to fund through an alternate course other than taxes, such, such as from a reserve. But we, we would need to talk about that, but that certainly is part of our philosophy, that if they are... that if they are one-time, a year or two, they would not go into the base.
Okay, so that's another, okay. I'll leave it there, except to say that, once we're dealing with the report, and I apologize to my colleagues for this, because I really, perhaps wasn't on top of the level I should have been, but I'm seeing the schedule and saying the next meeting's not till February 2nd. I think that's a little late to set a target as a council. So I probably, once we're dealing with the report, will propose, put forward a motion regard, related to a, a target for staff to strive towards. Thank you. Counselor Sponga?
Yeah, two quick questions, actually, three. One of them is, in the report that councillor, a regional councillor has alluded to in terms of the growth-related items and breaking them down, could we also be able to take a look at, I'm sure you have numbers like so many kilometers of road per parking enforcement, or so many planning application per planner, so forth. Will those pressures on, on additional staff and the business units, will that also be broken down? Okay, thanks. That one. The other one is, on, I think, Regional Councillor's made a very good point on, on the works, on, on the Fire Master Plan, especially since I believe I'm new, completely new to JCC, and I, I'm looking forward to sitting down with Councillor Twain and Mike Mays. But it'd be, I think there's, you had a great suggestion there, Bob, and it's probably to dedicate the workshop completely to fire, so JCC, and then on the, on the master plan as well, because I think if we're looking at 1.65% increase over the next four years, that's, oh, you're on JCC too. I look forward to meeting with you as well.
No, Joe, I'm not on JCC.
You were, you were, right. Sorry. I'm sorry, David. So I, I, I think 1.65, that's considerable. So I think the council as a whole should really get some more information on that. On the, on the schedule, is there a reason why we have a PIC on fees and a PIC on the budget separately? We know that turnout, and we heard it from Wanda as well, that it gets difficult for people to actually come to meetings, and, and we know what the turnout has been in terms of the budget. And councillor vague today, actually had a discussion, reminded me that on the fee side, we actually get more attendance than the budget. So is it possible to combine the two? And then by doing that, we can move the schedule up potentially?
Are you referring to the agenda, Joe, or the report?
I'm referring to the report, report 1453, and the budget schedule, budget cost schedule.
We can, that can be part of the discussion when, when we bring the report forward.
Forward, okay.
So we'll clarify the presentations.
Okay.
Okay?
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Bazanz?
Yes, thank you very much for the, for the presentations. And I have a couple of questions. And one, I'm sure my learned colleagues around the table may know the answer to this, but, but it's new to me. When we look at the, the statutory requirements for spending, we've got the Emerald Dash Bore at .4% or 40%, which is about half of the, the enhancements when you add in the JYFS. Can you just help me understand, like, why is, what is that statutory requirement, and why is it, it double what it was previously out of reserves? That's the Ash, Emerald Dash Bore.
Mr. Mays?
To you, Mr. Mayor. I believe there is a report to council on the Emerald Dash Bore, September? I'm, I'm not sure the actual date of it. We can, we can find a copy which outlined the program. Originally, the original thought when we included this in the budget, I believe in 2013 was the first year, it was, it was thought to be a three-year program, recurrent funding of approximately $100,000 a year. As we got more into, we found that it's much more extensive. And I believe that report refers it to being at $2 million over an eight to 10-year period. So on that basis, we've increased the, the amount of money that's going to be required for it. Further to what the CEO was saying, because of the extent of the financing being up to $2 million, we, we don't really have sufficient reserves to be able to cover that. So it would have to be supported by tax funding.
It's, it's a lot of the experience.
No, I appreciate what, what it is, but I'm just, because if you, if you look at sort of the, the expectation that, that people are looking for tax dollars go to enhancement, if something is kind of outside of our control, but we have to allocate funds to it, I just want to understand, given the relative weight, it's about half of what the enhancements are, are budgeted for. And then my, my second question, Mr. Mayor, is with respect to the correlation between what, what we're hearing people say they want, and what actually then happens with the budget. Is that something that we provide information back to demonstrate that this is what we heard, these are the, the priority areas, and be able to demonstrate then in the final approval of the budget, that this is what we actually have done as a result of the input we received?
Mr. Sheldon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under the, on the next steps, we indicated that we would try to identify a linkage to the community survey results. So that's what we're talking about. We're in one of those situations where those results are in front of council. The budget needs to be approved within a reasonable time into the new year. Council's still setting its strategic priorities. So those community survey results will help council in terms of setting their priorities for the whole term. But what we thought we could do is to identify any of the items that are part of the current program, and that could be added, that will also address those results. So you have a combination of maybe addressing some of those results in the first year, but then there might be a broader plan, such as what comes out of the playbook, for example, to, to deal with some of the community results over, over the entire term. I hope that addresses the question?
Yes.
So we are going to try to do the linkages, including linkages to the, of course, to the consultation results.
Okay, great, thank you. And, and one final question. In the communication plan, would it be possible to add in ward meetings for engaging people on sort of a more local basis?
To you, Mr. Mayor. Ward meetings are at your discretion. To hold them, we'll definitely provide as much information that you would need, packages, always possible to add it into that, that, that process. And would be happy to chat with councillors on how to put that together.
Thank you.
Thank you. My own question around the community engagement, we talked about the, how we're going to do these things. We heard something from the community survey. An example was sidewalk snow plowing, those kinds of things. Are we going to be specific in terms of the feedback that we're seeking through these vehicles? For example, sidewalk snow plowing may, may cost an additional so much per house. Would you still support it, knowing that, and incorporate that into the budget process, or to the budget feedback process?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's something that we've looked at as the Budget Committee, and has, although we provide quite a bit of detail, and then links back, as you see in the different service areas in the tool, to additional information, so people can kind of say, you know, infrastructure, what does that mean? And then click through, and you can specifically see sort of examples of that. It was our hope to, that, to add that as an enhancement to the budget tool this year, to get a little bit more specific. It is a little bit difficult, as you may be able to appreciate, you know, if we decide to pick one as an enhancement, and, or something that you would reduce, to make it more relative, I, hopefully, if you can appreciate the difficulty of, of just sort of choosing what those might be. But we would definitely take a look at providing a lot more detail to basically demonstrate what it is. If I cut this, then it could mean this, you know? Or if I increase this, it could mean an increase of, of a certain service.
I think in part, it, it kind of speaks to what councillor Bazanz raised, and that is, is the connection between the budget process and what the community wants to accomplish. And so that's very real, and we've, we've already researched that. And so items that we've developed, that, that we know what the impact would be, to, to get some direct feedback on, on, on the community's position on that. I think that would, that would give us a better indication. The, the other thing is, would help us to get the benefit of community impact before we establish our, our bottom-line target. So, so that we get some sense of what the community's looking for, and we don't just arbitrarily say, here's what we're going to do. I think what I've learned from the customer survey is, is that this engagement, this feedback, is something that, that we could work on as far as improving. So, some specific ways of doing that, even if it's timing or, or scheduling our budget differently to accomplish that, I think that's, that's an opportunity for us to, to give some consideration to when we're looking at this. Mr. Sheldon?
Mr. Mayor, I meant to do this when councillor Vega asked the question. The enhancement that has been shown generally is the sidewalk snow clearing, because council did refer that one to the 2015 budget discussion. So we have put that one in. We've not put, and there may be some minor things, but we've not put other enhancements in there, because that really happens through the discussion with council. So we have looked at, as I say, carrying the base forward, same service level, but you had a specific enhancement for us to look at, and that's in there. So just to remove the mystery on that one, that is almost entirely related to sidewalks, no clearing for the balance of the, the municipality. So back to the question about the communication component, that is one that you could specifically put out there if you wish. If there's anything like that, that you'd like a specific question on, we could do that.
Thank you. Counselor Sponga in the queue?
Yeah.
On that question, to you, Mr. Mayor, to either Wanda or Bob, we have the community service, the survey that shows us by percentage the areas that people want to see enhanced. Aren't we just, can we not just put a dollar value to that? And show, like, if we wanted to achieve this, this is how much more it would cost. And that would, that would give us some reference, not just in terms of what the community surveys shows us, the areas the community surveys identifies for improvement, but it actually gives us a dollar amount attached to it, and then you could refer that to the budget.
Mr. Sheldon?
We could try that. What we were trying to do in terms of linkages, so, for example, we've heard about communications. And a project that we have that is going to come to fruition early, and I think the first quarter of 2015, is an improved website. So we're going to show you, improved website already in process, here's where it's coming in, here's where it links to the community survey, and to, that comes out through this engagement. Again, to councillor Vega's question about other enhancements that the public are looking for in the area of trails and so on, there's also the capital program that needs to be taken into account. There is the ongoing capital program for trail expansion. So you will find significant items in a sort of a standard capital budget that does link to some of the things that we're hearing from the public. So we'll set all of those out for you. To go beyond that is a little bit of a challenge in advance of council setting its strategic priorities. The reference to a splash pad, for example, could address some of the issues raised through the consultation with the public. But you need time to work that through, through the playbook, and then to look at how does it impact the entire town. So it may be that not everything gets accomplished in the year one, that you're looking at accomplishing a number of things that tie in directly to what the community's looking for in the first year, and then you have three more years or beyond to accommodate other actions. So we'll, we'll identify what we can. If there are things that we missed, we'd be looking to council too, to, to comment on that.
Okay, see, staff, is that Mr. Mays?
Hey, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I wanted to clarify a couple of points. I, I heard some questions, and I want to make sure we're all clear on the numbers. One of the items was on the Emerald Dash Bore. I want to clarify, that is not included in the enhancements. That .4 is not part of the, the .69, it's a completely separate item, completely separate driver. As well, there was some discussion as to the Fire Master Plan and the cost of that. And I was hearing the number of 1.65%. I just wanted to point out, if, if you go to page 13, that 1.65% was the potential increase for all costs related to fire services. The 1%, which is shown as growth-related, that is the portion that would be allocated at Fire Master Plan. The other 0.65% being just their, their general increases.
Thank you. Counselor Kirwin?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to go back to, to the sidewalk clearing by, by the town on sidewalks that we don't clear at this particular point. I don't think we, we need another survey, Mr. Sheldon. I think it was quite clear when we had the workshop on the 10th, that one of the services that people are not happy with is snow removal on our sidewalks. That was really high. They're not, they're not satisfied with snow removal. I can tell you that, having been out knocking on doors and, and the phone calls during that period of time. When you bring that forward, and I would like to see any report from bylaws on how many convictions we have had in the courts of those who did not shovel their driveway. Because, you know, in my ward, I have a lot of people who go to Florida.
Yep. Sidewalk, you're referencing sidewalk.
Yes, I'm referring strictly to sidewalks. So I, I need that report, how many convictions we've had, because I don't, I, it just goes on and on and on. It's, it's like a burr under a saddle. People are dissatisfied with, with snow removal. And I believe we have to do something about it. And I think there's an, an item of fairness here. If you do the survey on Arnold Street, people are happy with the, with the snow removal, because they get their sidewalk plowed. But if you talk to people on Gray Street and Queen Street, in my ward, and mine's an older ward, they're not happy, because they don't get their snow shoveled. And they keep asking the question, well, how come you shovel this and we don't shovel that? Well, that's a school route. But all sidewalks lead to a school. So it's not a valid argument anymore. All sidewalks lead to a school. All sidewalks lead to a hospital. So either we shovel them all, we don't shovel any. I think it's got to be fair. And it's like the post office. They're saying the same thing now. I don't have any option about it. I get mail delivery, but people aren't parent and shared and don't. So now the federal government has become fair. No one gets it anymore. You're all going to get a super box or, or a mini box, whether you like it or not. And in my case, it's by the end of April. So I think we have to look at, at fairness for the tax dollar. Everyone's paying the same amount of tax dollars. Therefore, we have to deliver an equal service to our residents.
Thank you. Thank you. Regional councillor?
Thanks. I'm sure we don't want to drill too deep in this, but I'll be quick. I just state that this is a table for respectful debate and disagreement. So I'm going to start off by disagreeing with councillor Kirwin on that one. I, I get the fairness point, but I would have to say that I think this item is a bit different than almost any other enhancement in town, a splash or anything else. This is about affecting people's property almost. They consider the sidewalk, it's, it's in front of their house, they have a responsibility to shovel it, et cetera. And there is a considerable cost increase to doing this. And probably the only way, and it wouldn't be enough for me to see it on, on our surveys or to do public consultation, the only way I could support increasing our budget by that amount, increasing taxes by that amount, is a very specific, comprehensive, professional survey that asks the residents the clear question. For X number of dollars, whatever it is, if it's, you know, $32.60 a year, do you support a one-time tax levy of this amount for your sidewalks to be cleared? And we better make sure we include the price to the right amounts, that we can do it really, really well, and we don't have people, and we can reduce our complaints. But I, I don't think, I, I couldn't, as one councillor, should say, I'm pretty sure this is what everybody in Newmarket wants, and increase taxes, but my guess is probably not, you know, I'm sure it's less than a full percentage, but it's probably a fair bit of dollars. And so I'm sure, and, and the other thing I'd say is, I'm, obviously, we're not going to try to figure that out for this budget. So it'll be, you know, next year's budget probably, but whenever we get there, I think we have to think about how we figure out exactly what the public doesn't want. And maybe we have to think about the equity issue, and whether that means other, other approaches. But I certainly, one, one thing I would want, whatever decision we want land on, I think because it affects so many people, I would like to have a bit more comprehensive sense of, of what people think on that one.
Okay. I have councillor, I have councillor, I have you in the queue. I have you in the queue, councillor, councillor Sponga, then councillor Vega, and then councillor Kirwin. And actually, I, I really don't want us to debate that issue right now. I'd like us to stick with the overview.
They're already shoveling, so maybe we try a block.
Okay, okay. Councillor Sponga?
It's not preparing apples for apples.
Councillor Sponga?
Yeah, and, and respectfully, I don't agree with councillor Taylor. I, I believe that a municipality that is built on accessibility right now should really look at that. And we're not a municipality that's only accessible six months out of the year. We should be a municipality that's accessible for pedestrians year-round. And secondly, the bylaw in terms of clearing your eyes on your sidewalks after 12 hours is not enforceable. We have not enforced it, because we know it's not enforceable. There was actually a precedent setting, I believe, in Waterloo.
There was actually a precedent setting, I believe, in Waterloo, Ontario Supreme Court, where an elderly gentleman took the region of Waterloo to court to fight that ticket. And the final decision was that the actual responsibility for clearing the sidewalk is that of the owner of the sidewalk, and that is the municipality.
Okay. If we can get away, all right, thank you. If we can get away from sidewalks and get back to the budget, let's talk to the budget. Counsel Vega?
Sorry, I'm going to talk about the sidewalk. Sorry, sorry. For Counsel Taylor, I think there are real challenges in doing the type of survey you've asked for, just because over 60% of our residents, our sidewalks here, we already do clean. And if you cleaned in front of my side, my home already, I'd say, no, that's fine. I really wouldn't want to have any more. So, there is a real challenge with the survey, and that's all I'm saying. But I can also say that it's very popular to have all our sidewalks being cleaned, and that is something that people are asking for. So, that's all I'm going to say on the sidewalk.
Thank you. And that will be part of a more robust discussion. Counselor, that might be part of a more robust discussion when we look at the enhancements, okay? Okay. We, no further questions? Okay. So, I'll entertain a motion to receive the presentation. Counsel Sponga, Counsel Kirwin, thank you. All those in favor, that is carried. I'd like to bring forward then item number one of our agenda, and that is Report 2014-53. Could I have a motion, please, with respect to what's being proposed? Regional counselor? Your motion?
Yeah, I'll move the recommendation. I have an additional recommendation.
Okay. Would you like to add that?
Yeah, so, I'd like to add an additional recommendation that council directs staff to, to, to work within a target, or to work towards a target, I should say, to work towards a target of 2.5% increase, not including asset replacement fund levy, or an infrastructure levy, as it's called here. I would point out that on page 12 and on page 13, infrastructure levy line is in one case above the 2% to 4%, in the other case below the 2.4%, or the 2% to 4%. I suspect it's, staff meant to be seen in both cases as below that 2% to 4%. I'm pretty sure I'm right on my guess there. And so, the, I guess what I, and I'll make a, if I kind of brief comment about, or do you want to get your second?
Yeah, we should get the second, just to stay, keep the protocol in place. So, the work towards 2.5%?
That's as a municipal tax levy?
Just local municipal, not including the infrastructure levy.
I'll second it.
Excluding infrastructure?
Yes.
Speaking to the motion?
Yeah, I'll be relatively brief. We've had a practice now going back four years of putting forward a target. I think we've met most of them, and we haven't in every case, and sometimes there is unexpected or drivers that emerge. But having said that, I'm a firm believer that a target is both a benefit to council, to staff, and to the public. I think it provides a direction. It's not, and I want to be clear, I don't believe a target is something you're absolutely, you know, married to, let's say, but it's a strong indicator of where you're trying to go to, and this would be a maximum of 2.5%. I think it's important because I think if you wait, if you, in the cases in the past, my experience has been that if you don't set a target and you let the process roll out, more and more finds its way into the process, and more and more things are discovered, and more and more things are added to a wish list. And my experience has been that having a tax target in place, and that's why I think other municipalities are starting to look at this more fully and embrace it, I think you will see that the trend is towards smaller tax increases than without having a tax target. I think that makes it a very valuable tool in terms of keeping a bit of a cap or a bit of a directional cap on things, including ourselves. We said it early, and we can, already around this table, I've heard some things emerging that we'd like to see or we want, and they are all drivers. But I think if we set a parameter for ourselves, also, I'd go further and say this. This is, the infrastructure levy is something that is necessary. We've got the Hemsden report. I am committed certainly to have an infrastructure levy in each of the following four terms as a sustainability imperative. But when you start to think about that added on, you know, I think, I for one can say this, I just, I don't believe we can keep sustaining tax increases that can sometimes be in the, you know, 3.5, 4, and even higher range. We've had some, let's be blunt, we've had some higher tax increases over the past number of years, and some of those were for very good reasons, and certain years there was extremely good reasons, unavoidable reasons. But I think we have to start to rein ourselves in on behalf of the public, or the trend line will continue. And if that continues, we will, we will find ourselves no longer at the middle of the pack in terms of taxes, or no longer on the slightly above middle of the pack, but at the top of the pack. And that's not a place I want to be, and I believe this is an effective tool for avoiding that. And, you know, I know there's other drivers, and people say, but if we don't know about these contingencies, well, you know what? I'll be blunt, but even the Emerald Ash Bore, I've got some issues and trees in my backyard. I don't tackle them all necessarily if I don't have the dollars to do it. So, everything can be contained to the degree you decide to contain yourself, and I think this is a valuable tool, and I think we should continue to pursue it.
Thank you. Counsel Hampton is the second.
Thank you. I also believe that it's important that we give direction to staff, and 2.5 is, I think, is a good place to be. We see the range that we're presented with as 2% to 4%. We also see that inflation is, seems this past year, this year, has been quite a bit higher than previous years. So, that's why I'm seconding, and I think it's good that we set this direction. I also want to talk about our infrastructure levy and potential for adding some type of levy in the future. I'd like to get some further information. When we received the Hemsden report, we had a oil cost probably around $100 per barrel, and today we see something around $57, I believe. So, $55 today. So, it's, you know, it's a significant driver on cost for, whether it be for delivery of goods, or asphalt, or the pipes that go under the ground that are petroleum-based also. So, I'd like to see some further information. I've also, yesterday, I was looking at long-term forecasts for where oil is going to go, and, you know, there's some mixed ideas, but it looks like the trend is that it's going to stay much below the $100 level. So, if we could receive a bit of a report or some information that based on here, $90 oil, $80 oil, $70 oil, $50 oil, these are the requirements and how it's going to change the needs for our infrastructure. So, that would be some helpful information.
Thank you. Just a matter of clarification, have we, do we, have we bought futures, Bob, against fuel costs?
Mr. Mayor, I'd have to ask the treasurer that one. That would have been, the region has done that.
Mr. Mays? Have we bought, have we bought any futures for our fuel costs along with, through the region's availability, or no?
Through, Mr. Mayor, I'd have to double-check with our manager of procurement. I know that is something he's looked at time to time. I think on the, like on the natural gas, on the heating side, we may have something. I'd have to double-check that, but I don't believe we have anything as far as vehicle fuel.
It's a consideration if we, if we have, it's a consideration what the impact would be. So, that could be part of the information that's being requested. That's why I raised it, in the event that we had some futures commitments. That was all. Okay. Counsel Kirwin?
Just in answer to your question, I don't believe the town has ever bought any futures in oil, Tony. It would be through Friedberg, and I've never seen that in any invoice that I've looked at. So, I don't think we have any futures, Mike.
We can clarify. Thank you.
Just clarified. If I'm wrong, I'll say I'm wrong, but I don't think I am. I won't be voting for this 2.5%. I think it's too high. I wouldn't vote for anything more than 1.7. And what I'm looking at is the CPI for the Ontario Teachers Pension Fund, which is one of the largest in Canada. Teachers are going to get a 1.7% increase in their pension in the year 2015, but I would say 30% to 40% of those on pensions in my ward, other than the old age pension and CPP, many of them don't get any increase in their pension. So, I can't support that. I can't support anything higher than 1.7. Quite frankly, looking at the world scenario, I think we're going to go into deflation, massive collapse in the equities market, $1.2 trillion in the last couple of weeks, a price of oil just rolling down. I follow that very carefully. I follow the currencies. The markets have collapsed in Europe, so I can't vote for one, more than 1.7. And there are things that I will suggest to our CIO that I think we should be looking at, going through the budgetary process, but I won't talk about that now. I'll meet with the CIO first. So, I will not be voting for that because I think it's too high, and I think we have to, have to really look seriously at less than that.
Thank you. I guess that brings forward a timeline in terms of some recommendations that members of council would like to bring forward for consideration, either as an enhancement or a reduction. What would the timeline for that be? Mr. Sheldon?
Mike, could you please deal with that? This is a timeline for council members to submit ideas, suggestions, and so on. We did talk about that this morning.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Well, if it's for consideration, and we presented preliminary draft budget on February 23rd, a good deadline for submissions would probably be February 3rd, the day after we talked about the reduction options. I mean, obviously, any time before then is good. It'll vary depending on what's involved in the suggestion. Obviously, we can incorporate anything at any time, but to put it in, factor it into that, we need it from that. As far as establishing a target, we were working towards, in the process that we've outlined, a target in the 2% to 4% range. If council was to set a target in that, I don't see any changes as far as the schedule concerned. If the target's going to be outside that range, then there may have to be, I mean, the sooner we know about that, the better, because then we could work towards that, as we showed in, as we discussed, we're looking at, coming back to the reduction of options on February 2nd. If it's going to be outside that range, we would like to know as soon as possible so that we can adjust accordingly. You know, for instance, the difference between 2% and 1.7% may not sound like much, but it is fairly significant as far as the measures we'd have to look at, so, the sooner the better.
Thank you. Well, let's wait and see where council lands in terms of the process. Okay. Thank you. Counsel Sponga?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. In the past, I have voted against actually setting targets, but over the last three, four years, it's actually been, come around to see that it actually works, and it's a good tool to have. But having said that, I feel that it's a bit premature at this point to set the target, simply because it's just, I don't have enough information yet. I would like to see how those enhancements are broken down and where the growth requirements are. There are issues such as bylaw enforcement. We heard one of them earlier, sidewalk plowing, curb repairs, enhanced programs in terms of public works and roads and so forth. And I really need to get a clear understanding how much that 2.5 target is going to curtail what we're able to do. So, although I'm, I think it's a reasonable process, I would rather wait to get some more information from staff in terms of some of the enhancements, and of course, try to educate myself a bit around the Central York Fire and what their requirements are, and of course, the library. So, all of that, I need to get that information before I can actually settle on trying to work towards the target. So, for that reason, I can't support it at this point.
Thank you. Counsel Hampton?
Thank you. I appreciate my colleagues' comments from Counsel Kirwin and Counsel Sponga. I do believe that it's very important that we begin this process and give our staff some direction where we need to go, so they can come forward with potential enhancements and costs, and costs associated with that. It's very, very important that we set those directions. I would also like to see 1.5%, 1.7% as been suggested. The reality is, this year, we've seen some significant inflation numbers, and the CPI number, I believe, is somewhere around 3%. I don't know if, I guess maybe clarification from Mr. Mays.
Mr. Mays? 3% CPI?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The Toronto CPI, which is indicator that we use mostly, at the end of October, was 3% annual increase.
Thank you for the information. So, 3%, we have this inflationary numbers of 3%, so we're setting a direction of 2% and 2.25, it was, right? Regional counselor?
2.5.
2.5, thank you. So, it's significantly, or it is below the CPI and inflation number. So, again, I just believe it's important that we set some direction and get this working.
Thank you. Regional counselor?
Thanks very much. And again, I really do want to apologize to my colleagues for not, at least having mentioned casually that we're going somewhere with this, and I do apologize, that was not my intention at all. I would say, though, that this has been the time that we have introduced a target in the past. I would say to wait till February 2nd is sort of, it kind of defeats the purpose of a target, and there will be more information coming, but we have the high-level information on fire services, on library. We don't have the detailed information, but we have the higher-level information. And I think if a target is going to serve its purpose, which, again, isn't only to direct staff, but it's to send a message to the public, and it's to manage ourselves, frankly, it's a way of setting, it's like setting a household budget, right? You're setting a general parameter, but it's not specific. And again, to Counsel Hampton's point, it is below the CPI, which means it's going to take some exercise and effort. And the other thing I'd say to Counsel Kirwin, I mean, I love what you're saying, but if we're going to potentially have a sidewalk plowing enhancement in there, and to try to get it that low, will be very tricky. But I'm going to roll up my sleeves and work towards that with you, but the only thing I'd point out is that I did, and if I didn't say it, I apologize, but I think I did, but this would be a target of a maximum of 2.5. So, this in no way means that we can't as a council work towards 1.7 or 2, or whatever it is. But I do think that there might be some that would like 1.7. There might be some that, like Counsel Sponga, would think, you know, boy, I'm worried about some of the things that are important, you know, 3 might work better, but it's great if we can come to a number as a collective council that will help to guide us, and if it allows for your 1.7 still to be possibly realized, especially when we look at some of the suggestions you'll have and will all have, we can still get there. It's not saying it is 2, it's not saying it is 2.5, it's saying a maximum of 2.5. But I would encourage everybody to consider this. We've done it now for several years. I think it's been effective. I think if you actually look, the trend line in terms of tax increases has been decreasing. And I know everybody can't get maybe the exact number we want, but perhaps if we can find a comfort level there, I would encourage us to stick with this process. And again, in terms of timing, I think, given that February 2nd is the next meeting, and the information we do have in front of us allows us to move forward, I would ask a council to give it its full consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Kirwin, final comments, please.
Yeah, CPIs are variable. All I know is, I get my statements from the Ontario Teachers Pension Fund. They base the pension on 2015 on the CPI that they established. Omer's will be different. They could come in at 1.9. But we also have to think about the fact there are a fair number of people out there who have no pensions, other than old age security. They don't even have CPP. And many people who are on pensions that are fixed by mutual funds are seeing a decline in their assets, which means a decline in their pension. And, you know, we always look at this. So, I respect Regional Counsel John Taylor. We work towards something. The lower the figure in my mind, the better. If we work for 2.5, then we cut it off at maybe 3%, but if we work toward 1.7, I believe we can achieve it. And as I say, I must meet with Mike Mays on an individual going forward. That's what we did last year. I was chairman of budgets for many years in the past, and I want to speak to our CIO about suggestions that I do have. But we can't just continue. We can't continue to force people out of their homes. We can't continue to force people to sell their cottage, if they have one, because they can't afford the taxes. I know we sold our cottage at Big Bay Point because I could no longer continue to afford $10,000 in property tax to sustain the wealthy living of the people of Innisfield, and I say that publicly. We sold it. It was $10,000 or close to it. And it's just gone on and on and on. The property tax on my house alone is almost $9,000. The property tax on my house alone is almost $9,000. And, you know, it just keeps going up. And eventually, then currency becomes valueless, and we've seen that. But I don't want to get into that debate. But I think we really have to look at other things within the budget, and I will make those suggestions, but they're going to be hard decisions. Hard decisions for this council to adjust to.
Thank you. Councillor Vaye?
Thank you. I'll agree with councillor Taylor and councillor Hempin in that it is important to have a target. It's absolutely important to have a target of what we're looking at. And the target we're looking at is a maximum of 2.5. My only caution in that, and I will vote in favor of it, is we haven't really seen the capital budget yet either, and that's going to have an impact, too, in what's coming down the road for us. Everything from roads, curbs. We've been speaking about challenges we're having maintaining community entrances, et cetera. So we will be looking at a capital budget, too, that has an impact both on the cost of that plus any maintenance or operating costs that go along with any capital enhancements. So I will be voting in favor of this, knowing full well that we don't have the full picture yet, quite frankly. And, you know, hopefully not, but maybe it is something that we'll have to revisit once we do have that full picture and have a better idea of what our capital budget will be.
Thank you. Regional councillor?
Thanks very much. Quickly on that, I believe, but unless there's a large new capital enhanced proposed by council, I think for the most part, certainly the Old Town Hall, they've put in operational contingency for. And I think other growth-related ones, like expanded roads, I think operationally that's anticipated for. Is that correct?
Mr. Mays?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Just to confirm, the question is, is there going to be any impact from the capital budget on the operating budget?
No, that's not quite the question. The question was, is there any impact from the capital budget beyond... Any impact from the anticipated capital budget? There could be something that comes from council. Anticipated capital budget that has not already been accounted for operationally for this next budget year. So I assume you have a sense of what...
Okay. The anticipated capital budget, as I say, will be within the funding envelope. So the... What we're looking for for 2015 capital budget will be within the asset replacement fund as we anticipate the contribution in balances, development charges, the funding from operations. The capital budget has contemplated any of the growth needs. I believe it's also taken into consideration some of the expectations, the feedback we've got from the community on the community survey.
Sorry, does the...
So I think the question was, are we anticipating any operating budget impacts that capital might affect?
Hi, Bob.
Those have been factored into the operating...
Okay.
Those will be factored into the operating budget, and those are addressed under the provision for other enhancements, if it's an enhancement, or under the growth, if it's a growth item.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Shelton? Oh, okay. I thought you wanted to clarify. Okay.
I thought, by and large, unless we all of a sudden, as a council, say we want to build a new arena, then that would be not anticipated operation. But otherwise, for the most part, it is. So I guess my final statement on this would be that, again, I would like to find as close to a collective place as we can. And councillor Kerwin, I do recognize that there are different... And I think it's a good point. There's different measures out there sometimes of what the cost of living. And there's different indicators, and some people use different baskets. But I would be happy to amend the... With the seconders' support, to amend... And the reason I'm saying this is because 1.7, 1.9, and the fact that staff said if we were going to go below the 2 to 4 that they're talking about would be very... Would could affect the timeline of the budget process. So if we could amend it to say, provide a budget, a target to staff of 2 to 2.5%, and that would be darn close to that 1.9 area, but not throw us off our timeline. And it would allow staff to look at maybe a couple of scenarios in that range. So...
That's a compromise. Councillor?
Okay, I'm happy with that.
Well, it's important if the second...
Friendly.
She's friendly. Okay. Thank you. It's friendly, so that amends it. Okay. Thank you. Councillor Bazanz?
I was just going to comment that one of the challenges when you set a target, and I think it's good to have that direction, but when you set a ceiling, that there's a tendency in human nature then to reach that ceiling. So I'm much more comfortable in at least presenting or suggesting that there's a range with an emphasis on trying to see if we can get to the lower end of that range without impacting the kinds of services enhancements that are critical and important to the residents. Because at the end of the day, we don't want to cut so much that those things that we keep hearing are important get cut along with them.
Thank you. Councillor Brumholy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm comfortable with the 2 to 2.5 through councillor Taylor, councillor Vaye, councillor Hempin. But I'm also in favor with providing more information with regards to what councillor Sponga came forward with. There's a lot of information here, but not enough to... For me, to make a decision on going forward with an increase specifically. Thank you.
My concern is around... And I can support this recommendation. I can support these... This motion with the concern or with the proviso that, at that rate, we need to have a good understanding of what is not in the budget so that we know what we're saying no to. And if some of the things that we're saying no to are some of the things that we're hearing from our residents, then I think that would be good cause. And I accept a target as a target. And if we realize that some of the things that we are saying no to are critical and important to our residents, that this council has the ability or is prepared to saying, okay, we hadn't thought about that. So now that we have this information, we're willing to consider that. And I've seen that in past years, where we didn't hit the target, but we didn't hit the target for very specific reasons. And so that's, I guess, my caveat with supporting these recommendations. It gives staff something to work with, but also... And I'm thinking back on the region where we gleefully agreed to reduce the debt, the tax burden debt. But without getting into those kinds of details, there were a lot of projects that we felt that were important that ended up getting deferred and frustrating us. And so as long as it's a conscious decision that we're making about what we're not going to do, I'm fine with that. But I think that needs to be a conscious decision so that we'd have to see that structured in such a way that these are the things that are included, these are the things that are not, and then we'll make our decisions based on that information. So I'll support it on that basis and with that caveat, and I'm sure that that's probably in the minds of our members as well. So Regional councillor, final comments, please?
Yeah, just very quick. I think it's worth stating that, I mean, I do think we... And when you set a target, you're concerned about what about the things we've heard residents asking they want or they need, and can we meet that within a target? The only thing I'd say to council is that we often hear about what residents want or what they need, and we try to strive to do that. But at the same time, I'm sure when we're out in our wards and our meetings and during the election, we also heard residents saying they want lower taxes. And whether we can, to the extent to which we can do both, is the challenge we've got in front of us. And the thing I'll close with, because I'm a little bit having some fun, but when I introduced these targets some years ago, they weren't necessarily warmly embraced. And now having council actually trying to drive me lower is something I welcome. And I think this is... I think it's a good first step in the process, and I think it'll help keep us on track to the end in the range we want to be in. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. One final observation as well is if we achieve those targets, the overall tax increase all-in is likely to be well below 2%, 1.7, the areas that you're pointing to, councillor Kerwin. So the all-in tax rate might well be in that range as well. Okay? Any further discussions? All those in favor of the motion? All those opposed? Okay. That carries. Thank you. Why don't we take a break? It's 3 o'clock. Then we can come back to the planning report. So it's 10 to 3. Did we come back promptly at 3? Thank you.
Okay, I think we have quorum, so if people would take their seats. Next item on the agenda then is our planning report number 2014-45, and that's with respect to the urban centers modifications for regional approval. There, I would, I would highlight that in the recommendations that this is all subject to the further, any further actions or modifications arising out of the closed session, which, which we do have scheduled today. So, I'm of the view that we can deal with this report as it stands, and then go forward with the recommendations, subject to what the outcomes of our decisions are in a closed session. So, there are some recommendations there. Could I have a mover and a seconder with respect to the recommendations, and if there's modifications or anything that comes out of that, then we can work with that. Just to get it on the table, Counselor Sponga, seconded by Counselor Vay. Thank you. Any questions, or did you want to speak to this, Counselor Sponga? Nope. Counselor Vay, did you want to speak to it? Okay. Regional counselor then, I have you in the queue.
Thanks very much. Yeah, I just want to briefly mention that, and ask a question, and mention that I know this report isn't directly related to some of the future steps in relation to the, into the secondary plan. It's, it's related to these modifications. But I, it's just a sort of a personal preference, so it's not a motion or anything, but I'd like to see the, the implementation strategy that's outstanding, sort of kept, kept on, on the, at least the middle burner, and maybe referenced in terms of, you know, we mentioned here the deferral, so we point out Davis Drive is still being dealt with. But if we could just have it sort of, so it's, it's a reminder to ourselves as a council and to the public that that's pending. And then my question would be, what does, what does staff see that, that, that document timeline looking like?
Mr. Nizri.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, that has been incorporated into the prime document itself already. So, if you like, Marion can walk us through some of that language. There's, it's embedded in a number of different policies throughout, but it also makes specific reference to the individual criteria that are interested. So, if you like, we can highlight that for you now, Mr. Mayor, or perhaps we could even send a information report that, that highlights those, those criteria and the matters. I think what the regional counselor is inferring as to whether or not it should be specifically identified in the mod report itself.
No, it's, no, not, not this one now, but, I mean, my generic comment was, as, as this secondary plan could be future, if we can just maybe have a reference to that, as to maybe its upcoming, or its anticipated, or this. And my real question, actually, that was just a preference. My real question is, what's the, what's the anticipated timeline?
Well, and I'll, Mr.
The language I'm fine on, I've got that.
Mr. Mayor, if I can perhaps just see if we can have Marion provide a bit of a response to that, inasmuch as the, the work is already done. So, I think it's, I think it's something that's already embedded into the document, but let us, let us clarify that for you.
Marion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, my question is, um.
The button, the button, please, the button?
In terms of.
Thank you.
The implementation, the, there is a whole chapter on the secondary plan on implementation, and that's basically section 14. And the, the implementation section sets out a number of policies, and they're also related back and forth within the actual document itself. And I think the one you're probably most concerned about is, how does everything get integrated together? That, that's kind of where your question is, Counselor Taylor. So, I'll, I'll direct you to the policy, and I'll see if it gives you any comfort, because there is a number of things that, that do tie into implementation. But this is the one that deals with primarily with phasing of development. And it says, "The policy of this plan is that phasing of development shall be coordinated with the provisions of the infrastructure services and facilities identified in policy 14.2.2. As such, no development shall be permitted to proceed until it can be demonstrated to the satisfaction of town that adequate provisions of these services is available, or that arrangements satisfactory to town for provisions of these services have been made." And then there's another policy that talks about that pace of development will be coordinated with the phasing of, of the infrastructure, and the level of infrastructure includes a number of, of components: transit, road network improvements, transportation, demand management measure, measures, pedestrian and cycling facilities, parks, water and wastewater services, stormwater management facilities, community facilities, human services, street improvements, and utilities. And so then, then the next, you know, parts of the chapter do, do talk about, and in the servicing section also talks about the different levels of service. So, it's at a fairly high level, and it's at a policy level. And are you looking at more of a, of a detailed implementation plan? And if so, I think that kind of flows into our capital projects components.
Would you, Counselor, clarify?
Thanks. I guess the question I would have first for you, if I can, is that the, the language that you just quoted, with the exception of the, "It's policy, this plan, phasing of development shall be coordinated with provision of human services," which was part of the motion at the time, all of that language, was that already in the secondary plan prior to the, to the request for an implementation strategy?
Yes, it's been in there all along pretty well.
Okay, so, when I, when I, and if you want to go back to someone else, but I'm, I'm going to be a little firm, but I'll try to be reasonable. But when we, when I moved a motion calling for a binding implementation strategy prior to regional approval, if staff's response was that that's already in the report, shouldn't somebody have said that to me at the time, that we, we deem that to be already achieved? Or was I, was I misunderstanding something?
Mr. Shelton?
I think, Rick, I'm going to ask you to speak to that. That wasn't my understanding, that that was already in the report. I thought as a result of that motion, that a number of things were included into the report. But, Rick, if you can deal with that.
Mr. Nizri?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, and to the regional counselor's comment, perhaps we are guilty of not making that as clear as it should have been for you, and, and we, we're not, that wasn't, that was in, that wasn't done on purpose. But if, if you think that there's something missing there, I guess is the point that I'm interested in, we're, we're happy to think about what additional elements should be in there.
Okay, so, I'm very glad I raised this today then, because I think what you're describing to me, as was quoted, is high-level policy. And the motion, with the concern amount of public here interested in the motion, was a binding implementation strategy, addressing population thresholds and the infrastructure necessary to support that public, population targets. Infrastructure considerations might include, but not limited to, roads, parks, et cetera. What you've described to me was language that was already in a document when, when this recommendation was moved. And that policy language you're referring to is higher-level policy. What I was looking for was something a little more specific, and I'm open to seeing where that could go, and staff saying, "Well, this is what we can and can't." But, but, I mean, something perhaps as detailed as, you know, let me put it in the, the most uninformed layperson's view, which we often represent over here, but i- is it, is it feasible that we could go to full build-out numbers without any of the ring road completed? And if the answer's no, then what needs to be completed before we hit a certain population threshold? Or, so are there, for lack of a better term, are there more substantive triggers that we can put into an implementation strategy that says to people, "If you're worried about us being able to have the proper infrastructure to hit certain population thresholds, we have now put together a strategy of some sort, whether it's internal or external, whether it's long or short, that speaks to some," and again, I would point out that we're here as a strategy, and, and that I don't think can be dealt with in, in a, in a secondary plan, which is policy.
Mr. Mayor, may I respond?
Go ahead.
The transportation study did speak to the phasing of the transportation infrastructure. There were certain roads, including the ring road component, that was addressed, that had to be completed by 2021. And then the, the second phase was 2031. So, part of that was addressed through the transportation study. So, I think what I'm hearing is that we need to pull forward things that have been addressed through the transportation study and other studies, like the park study. We identified that we need the 21, 23.1 hectares of parkland. We had, we did a strategic analysis of what parklands we could secure, or hopefully secure early in the process, rather than later in the process, knowing that there are other parks that need to be secured as development proceeds. And then, of course, water and wastewater, some of that is, is a partnership with the region, because they deliver services, particularly on wastewater and the water supply component. So, there's a number of things that have to be all pulled together. We did identify the, in the, and this is separate from the secondary plan, but the active transportation, the active transportation network, the zero-to-five-year priorities, and the capital costs related to that. Some of the human services, such as policing and emergency services, again, requires a partnership with the region, because they deliver those services. So, there's, I think, I think perhaps, Mr. Mayor, we need to spell out what.
What the milestones are, what the specific milestones are in terms of, in terms of the population, is that, is that what you're looking for, Regional Counselor?
And what we've done to date, and what is really a partnership with the region and our others, to fulfill that implementation strategy. So, I, and I apologize as, as counselor, or as, as our director, Rick Netherlies, indicated that perhaps I wasn't as clear as to what you meant by a strategy.
Well. Mr. Nizri?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, through you, and certainly in support of what Marion has just articulated. I think it's our view that the language that is in there, perhaps worded certainly differently than the language that was offered by the regional counselor, is, is getting us to the same point. The only difference being in particular is the lack of specific reference to population thresholds. And Marion has indicated that there are year thresholds in terms of some of the work that would be done on the transportation side. One of the conundrums that we've had all along is, in respect of the region, they've been trying to keep pushing us up, as you're aware, in terms of some of the densities and the, the types of population numbers that would be there. So, there's a little bit of pushback, and I think we talked about that last time, from the region's perspective, respectfully, that they're, you know, a little bit worried when you start setting these interim kinds of thresholds, that things need to be done before something else can happen. So, that's why we chose the language that we did, that made specific reference to any individual application, as it comes along, has to demonstrate the, the appropriate criteria being met in terms of, be it traffic servicing and so on. So, my view is that I think we are certainly getting to the intent of what the regional counselor has requested. It's, you know, the secondary plan is a policy document, it's a strategy document, so we're, we have that. It's perhaps not a standalone document, as was suggested, but we, we're, I think we're getting to where we need to be. If this council thinks that there's some additional work that they'd like to see clarified, we're happy to do that as well.
If I, if I can. So, and I think it's, it's a communication issue, perhaps, but I think council did indicate that there was additional work that we wanted, and it's in the motion. What I think is maybe part of the mistake is that I, I, I thought at the time, I was, what I was suggesting was clear, but perhaps it wasn't, which is, I, I completely understand and agree with you, Rick, that that's, you can't get into that kind of detail in a secondary plan, and the region would object to it for various reasons. And I thought at the time it was meant to be a, a process we would enter into, and that's why I said that prior to regional approval of the plan, all that was, was a time to set that would make sure there was some assurances to the public that we'd thought through thoroughly. This could be, you know, a, a guiding document, or a, you know, a guiding strategy, but something that lays out some of the existing, but disperse information that we have embedded in different documents right now about the timing of, of certain infrastructure related to population. But it could be frankly, and I was hoping be some, even some new information, but that could talk about, and we don't have to go into areas that we don't control, and if, I mean, I'm not frankly looking for, you know, us to exhaust half-time digging into EMS and stuff. I mean, things within our world, the key ones, you know, using some of the existing information we have, but also perhaps even setting some, some new guidelines or information that we feel would be helpful to, to indicate where we think we should be in relation to certain, certain infrastructure and, and population, so that people have a sense that there's, that there's a, A, that there is, that work has been done, or is, is being done over the coming months, and that there's a place a person can go to look and see. Okay, so here, if I'm wondering, of all the infrastructure needs that come with a growing town, I can, I can go to this one document and get a sense of what the town feels needs to be accomplished within. And maybe what staff will come back with is time ranges, like we often have, is, you know, within this time range, we feel we
just coming back to dealing with those specific milestones as the population increases?
A strategy, or a report on a strategy that deals with those issues.
And it's understood to be separate from the documents?
Absolutely.
Okay, okay, all right, so that, good. Mr. Netherly, one more time?
I was just going to confirm that if council is otherwise comfortable with this document that's in front of you today, we can certainly augment and provide that, that additional work. And we can do that relatively quickly, but I take your point that it's not something that you necessarily need to have in your mitt before you send the blessing out to the region. So I think that's completely doable.
Okay, Mr. Sheldon?
That's fine, Mr. Mayor. I was going to say that the, the director and the commissioner myself can put our heads together on this one. The, the binding part, I think that word was what embedded it into the secondary plan, if I'm not mistaken. But the strategy, to have a document that summarizes all the different components, I think would be very useful.
Thank you.
Can I just, I don't want to let it go though, but I really would appreciate if staff would give consideration to this in the, in the, in the sort of the spirit it was, it was put forward, which is, I, I, I don't want us just to go and, and find pieces of some existing, I mean, I think a lot of our existing information can help augment and will, will be a form, the large, larger portion of this, but I hope we're, we're looking at the spirit it is, which is, can we create a bit of a, a bit of a document that council or the public could look to? And if that means in some areas we don't have a, a, a sense of infrastructure, you know, related to time, population thresholds and ranges, that then we think about, is that something we could, you know, put, so I'm not in a rush to get this, I'd rather have a, a good product that really does serve a purpose, it's not a thing.
Okay.
It's a framework for dialogue.
As, as this goes forward. Councilor Sponga?
Two specific languages, sorry, two specific questions around language that I had realized I had made notes for, on. The first one through you, Mr. Mayor, to Marion, is on page six of 26, and it's 5.3.2. Can you tell me if, if the need for retail in, in close proximity is the intention, why would then the language be changed from retail to commercial?
Go ahead.
Because it, it talks about at-grade retail presence is provided, and retail goods and services remain available within close proximity. Retail alone doesn't include services, such as.
Offices and so forth.
Offices and things like that. So you can have an office, like a real estate office or something on your, on the main floor. It wasn't all-encompassing enough to simply return, refer to retail. So it's a commercial presence, could be selling a good, it could be selling a service.
Okay. The other, a quick question is on 7.3.7, page 13 of 26. Latin 13, Latin numerals, very first paragraph. Where would one find a list of certain sustainability measures?
They're included in the secondary plan under the urban design and sustainability policies.
Okay. And what's that, what's that policy?
That section, and, there with me a moment, Mr. Mayor?
Sure, what number are you?
Page 13 of 26.
And what's the section?
Under sustainability, 7.3.7.
The very first paragraph.
The urban design and sustainability policies, Mr. Mayor, are contained under section 7.0. And the sustainability provisions specifically are 7.3.7.
7.3.7.
7.
Thank you, that's it.
That's it, Joe?
Thank you.
Okay, I was interested in the, in section 5.3.4, I think it's I, on page seven. And that's the reference to the Upper Canada Mall, and the amendments that are being proposed. Does that constrict or impose, impose some constraints on the Upper Canada Mall, or does it continue to, to, I thought the intent was the Upper Canada Mall's existing, existing designations would continue until they come forward with their plan, and would not be impacted by the secondary plan. Is that, is that still accomplished with that?
Yeah, yes, Mr. Mayor. There was, it was a little bit vague in terms of 5.3.4.1, because it just said simply in accordance with the zoning bylaw. And so we've included the words official plan and zoning bylaw in effect at the time of approval of the secondary plan, to demonstrate that the policies that are in effect until the, the detailed studies are done, remain as exists in the existing official plan and zoning bylaw.
Okay, and then if we go to page nine to 6.3.3, and it's under Roman numeral four, that's a new section, and, and I'd like to clarify the impact. Does this mean that, this only constrains the minimal, minimum amount of the population and, and not the maximum? In other words, are there tools in place that allows us to control or to set limits on the maximum population that we have? Or what are the tools that allows us to manage the maximum population? Because I'd hate to go into an O M B where they're saying, well, we'll hit the minimums, and incidentally, we'd like to throw another 10 stories on top, you know what I mean, if that doesn't fit with our plan?
Yep. As you recall, in the plan, we have minimums and maximums, and when we deal with, with the character areas, we establish targets for population and jobs. And those population and jobs are a long, very long term, in order to meet the density provisions of both the growth plan and the regional plan. And we were concerned that in some areas, if you don't hit, we, we're, we're at the, the averages are basically, these are generally averages in here, in our table, table one, of what could be achieved. And in order to ensure that we can go beyond those averages to meet the density provisions of the regional plan, we're providing a little more policy direction there to say that, yes, you can go higher, because these are simply targets, because the targets are based on an average between the minimum and the maximum.
Okay. So, so the density is, is the way that we would control our ultimate population?
It's through density, and we also need to ensure and monitor the plan as we go forward to ensure that we're meeting those density requirements of the regional plan in particular.
Okay. Then, in that section, 6.3.4, and the ones that follow, we still have bracketed some of those, those names, those designations, and I thought we had agreed that we weren't going to utilize those designations, that we would just refer to them as Young North, Young Davis, Young Civic, and, and Young South. So are we, are we still going to continue using those character area names, or will we be taking those out? I, my best recollection was that we.
I'm, it's up to council. I, I don't recall the, not being included in a motion. I can go back and check, but it's, it's certainly at council's direction.
My understanding was is that we would, would not, we would not be using those, those character names. Maybe my recollection isn't correct, but, but that was my recollection. Mr. Netherly? Okay, thank you. And, I don't know, members of council recall that discussion, or? Okay, yeah, that's true. It might have been a direction staff and not necessarily reflected in the motion itself, so that might be, so if we could have that as further direction to staff, that would be helpful. Okay. And on page 25, section 4.3.1, there's a, is reference or a change to the terminology, and I just wanted to see if there's any implications of doing that. Oh, here we are. Yeah. Where it references the Young Davis regional corridors as opposed to regional centers. Do you know what was, if there was a purpose to that, for, just for consistency throughout the document, or was there a specific intent for changing those, that language?
Yes. Through the O P A 10, we corrected, and, and I think actually, part of, part of it was also in O P A 7, we corrected the use of the term centers and corridors, because we had the Davis Drive portion of the, of the regional corridor identified as Young Street Center. And so it was very confusing when the Davis Drive was referred to as part of the Young Street Center. So we've modified all those words to be more in align with the regional plan, which talks about corridors, meaning outside of the urban center. You've got the Davis Drive corridor, you have the Young North corridor, and the Young South corridor. So now we've aligned our wording to refer to those areas outside the urban center as corridors for reference to the parent official plan, because that's what they're called in the parent official plan. So this, these policies on page 25 are going back to the parent official plan.
My concern was that part of our economic development strategy is promoting new market as a regional center, and I didn't want that to take away from that, that strategy. So, but that doesn't, it's just clarification. Okay?
It's just clarification to align the map and the words.
Good, thank you. Councilor Sponga?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, you raised a good point. I'm going to go back to that amendment, I think it was in section four, 6.3.3. So if, if outlines provided that the densities and built form provisions of this plan are met, right, so that is where you're saying, yes, you can increase over the, the range?
Yep, the target.
Okay, so, provided that the densities, so the densities is the control mechanism. So at the end of that sentence, shouldn't it say, and not exceeded? The densities?
The densities are, are, can be met, but they will also have the provision of bonusing. So I think met is, is an appropriate term, because they are established in your, in the secondary plan as a maximum. It's a bit of semantics.
Okay. But wouldn't it, so, wouldn't this trigger automatically, people would try to push it to the maximum, without necessarily the benefits of the option to go higher if they reach certain sustainable measures, or whatever it might be?
I, I, our experience to date isn't, is that not everybody goes for the max.
Okay.
And I'm going to give you an example of, and, and that may change as, as we proceed in the future. Like, for example, 345, 351 Davis, which is an application for stack townhouse, they're coming in below the.
But I'm just thinking even in terms of a potential O M B hearing, would, wouldn't that language be including that, not to exceed the densities that are in the plan?
Well, I think if we were going to worry about exceeding the densities, I think we'd have to rephrase it to say, provided the densities are not exceeded, and the built form provisions of this plan are met.
I'd be more comfortable with that.
Because you want, the met kind of covers both, but if, if, if you're more comfortable, I can rephrase that to say, provided the densities are not exceeded.
Okay, as a mover, I'd like to make that amendment if it's found friendly.
And the built form provisions of this plan are met, so you separate those two out rather than try to capture them with one term.
Great.
That, that would work as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, that helps give us a better degree of certainty.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, I'll call the question. All those in favor?
As amended?
As amended. Opposed? That's carried. Thank you. I'll need now, the only other item remaining is a closed session, so I'll need a motion, please, to win the closed session, in order that we may discuss a proposed acquisition of land by the municipality in Ward 6. Could I have a motion of that effect, please? Councilor Sponga, Councilor Broom-Pumlin, all those in favor? That is carried. The room clears?